Good evening, everybody. Today is September the 8th, 2020. Man, this year is going by so quick. I think within less than a week, classes will start and we'll begin the new year with a new set of challenges, specifically COVID. But the Board of Education is glad and our superintendent is glad to be here tonight. We're all glad to be here tonight, again, taking care of the business that we can via Zoom. So, welcome. On behalf of the Board of Education, we hope your evening is going well and we hope you might learn something positive about the district this evening as we carry on our business. So, this meeting has been called to order. We do have, as I understand it, Madam Clerk, one speaker. Is that right?
That is correct.
So, you can go ahead and introduce the speaker and we'll listen.
Okay, joining us is Ms. Maria Alvarado. She is going to address the board now. Ms. Alvarado, are you there?
Hi, yes.
Hi. Can you turn your video on?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Okay, you may begin. You have two minutes to address the board.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Maria Alvarado Francis and I have a son in the Rochester City School District. He is in pre-K for this year. I just want to say that I am unfortunately disappointed by the district again. Yesterday, I received a welcome phone call from his new teacher for this year and then today, I received a phone call telling me that he is displaced from his school. I'm very disappointed and this is less than one week before school starts. So, I just want to say that if you wonder why parents put their children in other districts, this is why. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarado. President White, I believe you're muted.
Yes, Ms. Alvarado, we generally don't take, we don't respond to issues and I'm not going to respond, but have you spoken to anybody about this issue?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so what I would like for you to do is, Madam Clerk, is there a way for her to communicate with you offline?
Yes, there is. Ms. Alvarado, I believe you have already contacted us via the board-of-ed education email address. If you can follow up with us that way, we'll make sure you're connected to staff who can speak with you further, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Normally, you know, folks, if we were live, the Board of Education would be sitting at the dais on the third floor of the 131 West Broad Street. And again, we don't respond to questions because this is the people's time to talk to us, but when we have issues like this in particular, where we have an opportunity in real time while we're on the third floor to connect a concerned parent with somebody in the administration who's sitting right there in one of the front seats, we do that. Now, with COVID, we can't do that as easily because we're in Zoom. But our clerk is going to connect you and make sure that you, Ms. Alvarado, get connected to the right person and make sure that we have done everything humanly possible to address your concerns. I don't know what that resolution would be and probably the superintendent doesn't know right now either, so I'm not going to ask her to speak to it, but somebody will get the facts from you. And again, you have our word that folks will give it their best effort to resolve this. What you say is of concern to, I know, all my colleagues and the best thing that we can do is put you in contact with somebody who can help you address it. So, hopefully, I believe that will happen in short order and you know how to reach for anybody who's concerned. Each of our board members have email addresses. The superintendent has an email address. You can reach any one of us. It just doesn't have to wait until a night like tonight, but Mrs. Alvarado sent you. You are here tonight. We're going to see if we can get you connected with somebody who can assist you. All right, thank you. Were there any written submissions?
Yes, we did have written submissions. Those have been posted to the website and we're just reminding the public that you are able to sign up to speak by emailing board-of-education@rcsdk12.org. And once you send us your information by 12:00 PM of the day of the meeting, we'll ensure that you're signed up on the speakers list or that your comments, if you so choose, are posted to the website and provided to each of the commissioners so that they're able to read your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. We appreciate that. And next on our agenda is some of the things, you know, we talk in advance about what should be on the agenda and leaders of the district that is board members and superintendent and we plan our agendas in advance as best we can. And sometimes we cover just general topics. The board wants to hear from certain topics. I know one issue that's been of concern to all board members, but I believe that Commissioner LeBron has raised this issue, but all of us are concerned about it, is, you know, several years ago, a couple years ago, the state insisted that we hire or contract with an independent monitor for one of our schools. And the question is rightly been asked, well, what's the status? What's that person doing? We pay that person, I don't know if it'd be called the fee, I believe it's called the fee, to provide that services. And so, we rightly are inquiring about the status of that monitor's work and the superintendent staff have prepared such a presentation for tonight. So, Dr. Leslie Meyer Small, you want to introduce somebody to give us that report on school number, the RISE Academy?
Sure, absolutely. So, as President White said, when a school such as RISE is closed and then it reopens, per the State Education Department, we receive the assistance of what's called a school-based independent monitor. Dr. Jallow is an independent monitor for the entire district, but Ms. Wilson is for a particular school and this is outlined per the State Education Department. So, she provides technical support to the principal, works side by side with him or her and helps to move them on track. And basically, it's a gradual release model. So, eventually, the principal is able to get up and running and support the school. So, this evening, Ms. Wilson will give a presentation on her work and how she has been supporting Christine, I know her as Sickles, sorry, Christine Poles at the RISE school. So, and I've had the opportunity to work up close and personal with her. When I was in the New York State Education Department, we met every two or three months. So, I look forward to hearing the report.
Thank you. Am I on?
You are.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to the screen, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I'd like to, first of all, thank the Rochester Board of Education and the superintendent for the opportunity to discuss my work as independent monitor at RISE Community School 106. I'm an educator with 30-plus years of experience, most of which that was spent in the Buffalo Public Schools system. My first assignment as principal was to one of the lowest performing schools in the district that was designated as a school understate registration review, known today as receivership school, within the first two months of my assignment. With the help of a dedicated and committed staff, we were able to remove our school from that accountability status in a few years. Moving forward with Buffalo, I became the community superintendent of the superintendent's school improvement district, which consisted of the 16 lowest schools in Buffalo. After working with them for several years, we were able to remove 13 of those schools from the state review so that their report cards no longer considered them as schools understate registration review. I held other positions in the district. I retired from Buffalo Public Schools as the chief academic officer. After retiring, I became an educational consultant with principals in low-performing schools in districts and states across the country in the area of instructional leadership and time management. And as you can see, most of my work for most of my career has been in the area of school improvement, which I passionately believe in, and it is the work that I find most rewarding. I was appointed as the independent monitor at RISE Community School in June 2018 by the former superintendent and the former New York State Commissioner of Education. I am responsible to the commissioner and to the Rochester School Superintendent jointly. The scope of my work included monitoring the school closure of Kodak Park 41, of monitoring and assisting in the development of the new RISE school, and in monitoring and assisting the new school as it opened. My school closure work involved working closely with the office, with the Rochester Office of School Innovation, Office of Innovation and School Reform. I worked most consistently with Mr. Dan Hurley, who was invaluable to me as he was thoroughly knowledgeable about the school closure plans as well as the plans for the new school that were approved by the state. I met with him biweekly, him or others, the head of the OISR and other staff members to discuss the school closure implementation. I would receive a status report, which I would use the information from our meetings and report to prepare a status report for the commissioners designate me, who was the assistant commissioner of the Office of Innovation and School Reform. That work occurred until around the end of June, the beginning of July, when the closure of Kodak Park School 41 was complete. In terms of working, monitoring, and assisting with the development of the new RISE school, I had to review and become very knowledgeable of the plans that had been approved by the state. I also participated in the interviews and hiring processes of the assistant principals and new teachers. I received a status report on the marketing of the new school. I also worked and received reports about enrollment patterns and trends by grade to make sure that the students that were being enrolled were according to the state-approved plans. I met, and this work really involved working very closely with the principal, Mrs. Poles, as well as the Office of Innovation and School Reform. I met often with the Mr. Hurley in the Office of School Innovation and in the Office of Innovation and School Reform with Mrs. Poles to monitor the support that the district was providing for the instructional programs, the enrollment of students, make sure that there was adequate funding to hire staff, and also to make sure that the other elements of the plan were being implemented. I worked with, I monitored and ensured that the physical plant was being upgraded as needed and modified so that the new school would be welcoming to students and their families. I received a report and met part, the partners that the school was bringing into the new school. So, that was, and that work was ongoing and that was, those are the highlights and the strong elements of that work. Once the school opened, I visited the school and I continue when it's open to visit the school to observe the progress of both student enrollment, to observe classroom instruction, meet with administrators to discuss the implementation progress and any challenges that arise. I was also, I also participated in the orientation and the extensive professional development program of the school, monitoring those activities and the orientation of the new school. In addition to that work, I also monitored and participated in the creation of a data dashboard and its development, which is used to store grade-level data to guide and inform instructional planning, professional development, attendance meetings, all of the meetings in the school also to help teachers in their planning and grouping of students strategically and fine-tuning and personalizing students' goals. And it's really that where that vehicle for the school, that the school uses quite well to inform all decisions in the school. So, that really was the scope of the work that I did. I prepared a PowerPoint for you to just give you an in-depth look of some of the highlights of the work that we did. And Ms. Wade, if we could go to that now. Next slide.
As you and Adrian.
I'm sorry? Are there any questions about the work before I move forward? Okay, then the summary of the meetings and communications for the academic year, both 2018 and really goes through 2020 before COVID. In May and June, as I said, there were administrative and faculty interviews for the assistant principal and the teachers. I participated in the guiding set of questions that were designed to ascertain the interviewee's strengths for the assistant principal and their instructional leadership skills, teaming, relationship building with parents and community, and their willingness to partner with the principal. Teacher interviews were structured around teaching practices, student learning, partnering with parents, and understanding and committing to the district MOA and the EWA agreement, which was the employee work agreements that the district had with the union, with the teachers' union. Other activities once a school opened included building walkthroughs. These were learning walks. I'm sorry, before I get to that, between June and just kind of March, we did frequent building walkthroughs, just to make sure initially that the plant was moving forward in a timely manner to ensure that a new environment was created. And they did a great job in that for the incoming students. And then there was just ongoing monitoring to tweak as Mrs. Poles and the district and her chief engineer saw fit. Between June 2018 and June 20, I had to prepare biweekly joint status reports in a joint meeting between, with the New York State Office of School Innovations and other department heads, and also with the Rochester District Office of Innovation and School Reform, along with Mrs. Poles. These need, I facilitated these meetings to provide a status report on the update for the new school, how it was progressing, how it was adhering to the approved plans with all components being implemented. Those meetings became evolved early on. I worked really hard to make them partnership meetings where we came together and we had a common purpose, which was to ensure that RISE Community School 106 would remain a school in good standing and to provide all of the help and resources, both from the state and the district that we could to make sure that this happened. From July through August, from July 2018 through August 2020, there was extensive professional development, which really helped to prepare teachers to do this new work. This was a school in which we brought in new teachers from all of the district and some new hires that had been teachers for at least three years. And it was important that they understood exactly the reading program, the math program, the expectations for the social and emotional development of the school, and all New York State social studies, and also the special ed component of the school, which had an autism spectrum, that really was very important. And so, there was professional development that looked at all of these areas in depth with the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, which was the reading programs or in math and other areas. If we can go to the next slide. My activities continued for opening day. I was there. The school and the school grounds and facility were clean, freshly painted, and it was absolutely shining. Principal Poles and her staff worked very hard to provide a very welcoming environment for students and families from day one. Students were met by staff in a very welcoming way. They were escorted to their classrooms. Parents' concerns and needs were met on the spot and addressed so that no student was turned away on opening day. Through September 2018 and March 20, we did learning walks. There were professional learning community meetings, both across grade levels and within grade levels. Data conversations were had, leadership team meetings. I participated in the strategic planning for instructional programming and also staff development. I really participated and monitored all, every activity that's on this, in this PowerPoint. All of the meetings at RISE that I monitored and participated in had one purpose, and that was to support strong teaching practices in order to enhance teaching and learning. Mrs. Poles and her instructional leadership team, along with teachers, worked diligently to identify the trends in the RISE classrooms through the learning walks. Major takeaways were brought out of those learning walks and discussed. They were reviewed. Student progress and challenges were under constant review and discussed with teachers and coaches. The teachers also worked hard to unpack and discuss units of study, to review student data, to discuss and plan any adjustments to improve teaching learning. And I was both an observer and a participant in all of this work. In addition to this work, there were continuous phone calls, emails, meetings, as you can imagine, to the Office of Innovation in School Reform, facilities, human resources, student placement, the State Office of Innovation and School Reform, and also when we had a need to reach out for support from other state departments, we also did that and we were always met with support and help. Next slide, please. I really designed this presentation around the tenants. So, looking at tenant two, which was school leadership practices and decisions, and the tenants, I'm sure you all know, or the diagnostic tool for school and district effectiveness. The following systems are in place to support, monitor, and document instruction and student achievement. Mrs. Poles and her leadership team developed a master schedule, which was created so there was an emphasis on literacy and numeracy. Students received 120 minutes of daily literacy and literacy program, which was the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, and they also received 84 minutes of ZERN math plus teacher, which was, ZERN math included both teacher instruction and digital instruction. There was an additional 30 minutes daily for embedded New York State test preparation, as well as a master schedule that included time for both professional learning communities of teachers with topics aligned to building instructional priorities and RISE consistencies. There was a data board, I'm sorry, data dashboard developed, which I said earlier. There was a data board, I'm sorry, data dashboard developed, which I said earlier. And that dashboard had a tab for each grade level and stored all of the grade level data. I also attended some of the multi-tiered support system team meeting and attendance meetings, which occurred twice a month. Next slide, please. Academic progress reporting curriculum and instruction tenant three. I monitored and participated in the temple days of the teacher college reading and writing, coaching, professional development for teachers. I observed the work that took place during the coaching sessions that focused on unpacking teacher college reading and writing units of study for all teachers to become proficient in both understanding, delivering, and providing engaging mini lessons and small group lessons for students, all the students, both Gen Ed, Special Ed, and ESOL students. The focus was on, there was also a great focus on how to scaffold instruction with strategies that support the learning, which met the needs of all the learners. Next slide, please. In math, there is a very strong building math teacher, and math was an area of progress. An area of progress in math was the work that took place in creating a math program that provided 42 minutes of grade level instruction in a workshop model and 42 minutes of math intervention and acceleration. This was ongoing work. It was intense work, and it was very rewarding work. Next slide, please. Rise is a school in good standing. It opened as a school in good standing, and after the students took the 2018-19 New York State assessments, it remains a school in good standing. So all of that hard work was really important, as you can see. The social-emotional development of children was very important, an important component in the Rise programming. The school was really, really bent on creating a safe and healthy school environment for students and families and teachers. The second step program, which was a fully integrated framework for social-emotional academic success, was implemented. They partnered with the Center of Youth, which was a community-based organization to provide a structured approach for students that teaches social-emotional skills and strategies through matched intervention and/or prevention. One of the most successful and innovative programs, I think, that Rise instituted that I observed, was the Reconnect Room. This was a room that was developed to facilitate a student's ability, when having problems in a classroom, to come out of that classroom. They get asked to come out of the classroom. The teacher could say, "You need to visit the Reconnect Room." And the purpose of that room was to give the student a chance to reflect on what was going on that was interfering with his learning, to restore any harm that had been done, and then return to the classroom. And this was for students in that building that was very successful. Really cut down on out-of-school suspensions and a lot of in-school suspensions. Students were, developed positive behaviors as a result of the support that they received in the Reconnect Room, which enabled them to return to class as quickly as possible. Most importantly, the Reconnect Room was not used as a timeout room. It really was a time where the students did active work in terms, they're reflecting on why they had to leave the classroom and what they needed to restore and able to return so that they could get back into the business of learning and achieving. Next slide, please. Parent and community engagement is another strong component of the Rise programming. They establish a culture of partnership and support with their families and communities. It was important that they established as a new school, Rise traditions, that students, families, staff, and community could begin to look forward to each year. And they've done a really good job of that. I monitored these events. The school has a full-time parent liaison and a community site coordinator. And then I have listed some of the events and the community partners that help support and enhance family and community engagement. There were parent orientations. There was a Thanksgiving dinner, breakfast with Santa, haircuts for the kids at the school. There was a concert. They put on a music production that was amazing. All students in the school participated in that. And the lead actor was a student with disabilities that you would not have known, that you would not have known. And he knew his lines. He was, it was just excellent, brought tears, really. It was just so well done, and it really shows what our kids can do when given time and opportunity. There was a Black History Month celebration, their attendance celebrations. In terms of partnerships with the school, they had, they, next slide, please. They have many community partners. Their main partner is the Center for Youth, which delivers an array of services focused on social-emotional support for students and families. Some of the service included the restorative practices I talked about in the Reconnect Room, crisis intervention, counseling, and also family support. There is a community person, Cha Cha, that plays a guitar, and he provides, and happy birthday, Cha Cha is a community organization. I'm sorry, that's not fair. There's also a person that plays a guitar and comes through the school, but happy birthday, Cha Cha is a community organization that provides birthday presents for the students and did so in grades K through 2. As you can see, they had Generation Two. They had Naz with College with pre-service teachers. And then there was a food link, which helped establish a food pantry for the school. Also, the teachers and administrators provided meals to families as needed. So that really are the highlights of my work with Rise. I would be happy to respond to any questions that you might have as a result of this presentation. This is LeBron.
Yeah, so I have a question. I raised my hand, but I don't think President White is back.
I was trying to get my act together in terms of the list, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Just a very quick question on the data dashboard that you mentioned. I remember we went through as the board, some extensive walkthroughs with the previous superintendent with Rise having the conversation, but my understanding was the data dashboard at one point was supposed to be district-wide. But just curious if you guys are still utilizing a data dashboard?
Absolutely, absolutely. It is central to informing and guiding instructional work that goes on in the school.
Okay, that was actually the only question I had, and I thank you for the presentation. And if you can just send it to our district clerk so that she, I like to have things in writing, too.
I did. I prepared a packet for you of all that I have presented, including the scope of work and the specific work and highlights of my time after the school.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for coming. I did request it because I do think it's important for our community to know who all is involved within the district. And I know that a lot of your work is behind the scenes and really personal to the school and Rise and the leadership here, but I did want the community to hear the work that you're doing there, what's happening at Rise, so that they're aware as well. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for inviting me.
Any other questions? I see Dr. Myers has a question or statement.
Sure. I just wanted to follow up. Certainly, Fran, thank you so much for that presentation. And as Commissioner LeBron stated, she was very interested, as well as other commissioners were interested in hearing. But what we'll do is when we get those reports, we'll make sure that we include them in the closest Friday letter after she gets them, so you can see the work that happens throughout the year. Because what happens is at State Ed, we review, I used to review them with the independent monitors. We'd have the conversation about anything that needed to be tweaked, or we would kind of ask questions and whatnot. But we absolutely, after that conversation happens and we get the report, we'll make sure the board gets it, so you can see the work.
And also, if I could just say, I think one of the important aspects that I think, I tried to be value-added. And so it was important that a partnership be built with both the state partners, so that I advocated for Rise with the state as well as with the district. I think that we were all in it together to make sure that this school remained a school in good standing. So thank you very much to talk about work that I love.
Vice President Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I go back to the school when it was before Rise, and there were a lot of issues, a lot of issues around race and a lot of staff there who was resistant to the leadership that was in their school, to the point that they had, you know, teachers' union involved in doing some egregious kinds of things in that school. I mean, I've seen the documentation and what have you. I guess my question is, are there still, and maybe this is not a question I can ask publicly, but are you having, are people cooperating over in that school? I know it's good standing now, but it's good standing because it's a new school. So, and I know that prior to us changing leadership over there, as a result of it going into leadership, we were on a roll. There were some good things that were happening. I guess I say that to say this, I don't want the work that you're doing to be undermined or sabotaged. And that happened when it was, was it 43th School? One of the schools, I can't remember the number, but that happened quite often. And in my mind, that was the reason why the school was in receivership, not even, you know, the issues around academics, although that was, that was the, what you saw, but there was a lot of personnel issues that was at their school that needed to be addressed. People didn't want to cooperate, and you had the union who was actually leading that charge, where they were not, they were being resistant to the leadership. So in a nutshell, do you have staff, are all the staff on board over there working on behalf of our children? And at one point, there was also the issue of race. I mean, they had also put a Facebook page calling one black male that we had over there dark fader. So you had all that kind of wretchedness that was over at that school at one point. So just sort of give me a background, give me some highlights of how the staff are or are not cooperating over there.
Rise is a, let me see, Rise has a very, very strong principal who oversees what happens in that building. She also has a committed staff. Mrs. Poles works with her staff, and they work with her to ensure that the children feel safe, that they feel valued, that they know that the teachers are willing to help them succeed. So I will say that it started as a school in good standing, but it also went through a cycle of state assessment testing and remained a school in good standing. So they are, they have a strong social-emotional program. The culture and climate of the building is one that is nurturing for kids and their families. It really is, in my estimation, Commissioner Elliott, a very strong school that Rochester can be proud of. And I am confident with that leadership and the support of the district. Rochester will just continue to flourish and grow.
Thank you.
Vice President Elliott, I mean, Commissioner Powell. Thank you, Vice President Elliott.
Thank you. My question is about the demographic of the student population. Are they mostly students within walking distance? Are they, this isn't a citywide draw school, is it?
No, it is not.
So what is the makeup of students bust versus students walking? And I do understand the physical location makes some parts of its, of its radius, if you will, not, includes a lot of commercial property. I understand that, but what is the makeup of walkers versus busters?
I don't have the exact data, but what I will do is get that data and put it in your, in the packet that I supplied for the board. I will tell you that they do have a large, or not, I can't say it is the majority, but they do have a significant portion of students who do take the bus, as well as those who walk.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands being raised. So I just have a couple of questions and one or two comments. First is a comment. It is, we appreciate the work that you're doing over there, but I want to begin my comments by recognizing the fact that Lisa Whitlow, who was a former principal over there, I think she had a vice principal by the name of Tiffany Lee, and most importantly, Beth Masetti Miller, who was, I think, at the time, our deputy superintendent charged with recreating what is now the Rise program. I would not want their names to be forgotten because that whole effort began with an idea that Lisa and her team had over there and Beth had. So, and that leads to my first question, which is, and you can provide the answers later on, if you're aware, with Leslie, this is also to you. To what extent are we gathering those best practices that have resulted in that school being turned around and making sure that they are being replicated to the extent possible in other schools? Now, this, of course, isn't our only school in good standing. Number nine did a complete turnaround, and we've talked about it length, and they did that without an independent monitor. And we've talked about replicating best practices there, but I don't need an answer now, Leslie, because perhaps it is too early. But it would be good to know that these things that you're discussing tonight, Ms. Wilson, that we are replicating those. I know that's not your role, you're focusing exclusively on the Rise Academy, but Leslie, I really would like to see, given the consistent, this isn't a one-off. It seems that they have been on a Rise pattern, trajectory for a while. So we really should be replicating what we see in these schools that are successful. So maybe later, Leslie, if not now, it doesn't have to be now, if you could tell me to what extent we have developed professional development around the success of that school, that sort of thing. Have we thought about that, or have we, you know, could you provide any insight now, or do you want to give it to me later?
I'm sure we have. Carmine, if you don't mind coming on screen, I would imagine that when the chiefs meet with their network zones, that they're having conversations, but I don't want to put words. Carmine, can you answer that at this point?
Good evening, President White, Vice President Elliott, four commissioners. So the Rise School has worked so closely with OSI, with the Office of School Innovation. So, the Rise School has worked so closely with OSI, with the Office of School Innovation, and with Teaching and Learning. Obviously, anything that we garner from their successes, we bring back to the large group during principals' meeting. This year, I'm also very fortunate to have Christine in my network. So she will present to the network of what's working and share best practices. And we do that in all of our network meetings, because we all have schools that have successes in certain areas. So, you know, OSI, Teaching and Learning, hand-in-hand with Rise. And then we present that information to principals to share best practices.
That's what I thought. Thanks, Carmine. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And, and you know, the whole structure of chiefs allows for that kind of replication, because the chief is associated with a number of schools. And, and then the other question that I have, that doesn't have to be answered today, is if we looked at ELA and math scores, and, and, Ms. Wilson, don't take offense to this, but we, at all costs, at all points, particularly now, we are asked to get a return on investment. And so my question is, and it's, it's a challenging one, but it's one that should be asked, particularly by people who are constantly talking about being strong fiduciary agents. If we looked at, and you don't have to answer this today, but if we looked at the ELA and math scores, would we find a pattern that suggested that they were on the right track? And please, don't take this offensively, but I'm, I got people talking in my ears about how we're spending money. Would we find a pattern that suggested the school was on the right track before you got there? Or do you, and, and you don't have to answer this, and I don't want to make this about you. But I want to know, because this school was a school in good standing before you got there. It was clearly reconstituted. And I'm wondering, is there any evidence that suggests that this is a, a good way for this, in this instance, that the state needed this? Now, I, I know you could probably spend quite a bit of time telling us about the things that you did. But I'm wondering, does the state, or do you as a monitor, look at whether the, the role of an independent monitor for a school has had an impact directly?
I think that, I appreciate your question. This was a-
I'm asking it respectfully.
I appreciate that, but this was a new school, so I didn't, we did not have any data previous to the opening of this school. Our data was collected as of our accountability data, as of 2018-19. And I can tell you that one of the things that we do, and I certainly am a big proponent of this, because I know it is the only way that you can continue to improve and grow your improvement, is with the collection of smart data, with the use of smart data, and making sure that, that all practices, all practices, teaching and learning, are really underscored by the data that's collected. I am not in the business of, I hope they do well. I think we need to know they do well based on what we're doing. And I can tell you that the staff at Rise is, they were very accepting of, of my work in that area and have really embraced it. And to, I mean, you should really take a look at that data dashboard and the wealth and the depth of information. I, I think the thing is to go deep and not so broad, so that you make sure that kids are learning. So I am, I'm not offended by the question, I think it is a hard question. I think that to do anything other than make sure that the school is a success in both the way children feel and experience at school, as well as accountability data, is essential. I also want to say that Dr. Masetti Miller was instrumental in, in the support of the development of the new Rise School. Absolutely, and her staff.
Thank you very much.
Was a part of, yes.
So let me end with my original comment. We, we, we really do appreciate your work, and it seems like it's bearing fruit. And you know, this is good news for not only the students at 41, but for, at Rise, but for all of our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Let me turn to my screen to make sure I didn't miss anybody. Looks like we're good. Again, Ms. Wilson, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Myers, for preparing that presentation. We, we do appreciate it. And we also appreciate the way that you'll be able to keep us up to date by the superintendent report, so thank you for that. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of resolutions. So we have a few, not as many as we do on a normal business meeting, but they're all important just the same. And unless I get an objection from one of my colleagues, I'm going to try to sort of pair some of them together. If there's a problem with that, or if someone wants to go into executive session, you need only tell me, and we'll do that. So the first motion that I need is to have a conversation about resolutions 264 and 265. Both of these deal with resignations. Is there a motion?
One, one second, President White, 254 is where the resolutions start?
Yeah, I was going to say, I have resolution 254 as the first resolution.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what I said. I thought I said, perhaps I didn't. 254 and 255. Oh, I didn't, I jumped with the resolutions 264. Thank you very much, Callia, for catching that. I'm looking at a small notepad here. Yes, 254 and 255. These are both tenure resolutions. So long as nobody has any objection to handling those two resolutions together, that would be helpful. So can I get a motion to discuss? Yes.
They're appointment resolutions.
I, I thought they're tenure resolutions.
254 is tenure, and 255 is an appointed part-time position?
But it says, within the tenure, teacher tenure area.
They're, they're both appointment resolutions, they're not tenure. They, they say they're appointing-
Oh, I see. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve. Absolutely right. You're absolutely right. All right, so can I get a motion to discuss resolutions 254 and 255?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Is there a second? I think I heard Commissioner Powell. The motion, that was Commissioner Malloy, thank you. The, the resolutions are properly before the board. Any questions or comments regarding resolutions, appointment resolutions 254 and 255? I don't see any questions, or let me look at my participant list. No hands being raised, so let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of resolutions 254 and 255 indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? All right. Next we have before the board, I hope to have before the board, resolution 262, which is a civil service resolution of sorts. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Any questions or comments regarding resolution 262? I don't see any questions or hands being raised, so let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of resolution 262 indicate by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? Seems like the ayes have it. Next, we have, what I think, unless Steve corrects me, our resolutions 264 and 265, which are resignation resolutions. Can I get a motion to get those resolutions on the floor?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. I heard somebody else. Who's that?
Seconded.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Any questions or comments regarding resolutions 264 and 265? My list here. Don't see any questions or comments or hands being raised. So, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of resolutions 264 and 265 indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Once again, it seems that the ayes have.
One second, Commissioner-
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Powell, I need to see you on screen in order to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I wasn't on screen. Okay, that was a yes.
Thank you, Madam Pluck, for staying on top of that. And thank you, Commissioner Powell, for turning your monitor on. Okay, next need a motion to discuss resolution 269, which is, seems like it's a resolution relating to resignations. Is that right, Steve? Unpaid?
Uh, unpaid leave? 269 is kind of an omnibus, it's, it, these are amendments to previously passed resolutions to correct things that we discovered along the way.
I see, yep, that's, that makes sense. That applies to the rest of them too. All right, so we now know exactly what it is. All those, any, I need a motion to discuss resolution-
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Any questions or comments regarding resolution 269? Folks, if you wonder why I'm being silent, I'm switching back and forth on my cell phone to look at the participant screen. Seems like there are no questions or comments. All those in favor of resolution 269 indicate by turning on your video screens and saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Once again, the ayes seem to have it. I'd like to next gather together resolutions 270 and 271. These related, appear to be relating to recalling certain positions, part-time substitute and teacher positions. I need a motion to discuss those resolutions, 270 and 271. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Any questions or comments regarding those two resolutions, 270 and 271? Doesn't appear there are any questions or comments, so let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of resolution 270 and 271 indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, those resolutions pass. Now I have resolution 276, which is, of course, we all know is our formal resolution, reconstituting, recreating the ESA commit, ESA committee. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I heard Commissioner, Vice President Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. All those in favor of reconstituting excellent and student achievement-
I wanted to make a comment real quick, though, Ben.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
I just want to formally, officially, again, congratulate Commissioner Vice President Elliott, who is going to be chairing this very important committee. And I know that we voted, but it was late, and I think people were not watching at that point, because it was after we came out of executive. So, we did vote as a board, and it was unanimous that Vice President Elliott would be the chair for the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee. And I'm looking forward to learning from this committee on how our students are educated and so forth. And I do think that you're the right person to lead us in those conversations, Vice President Elliott. So thank you for taking that on.
Since we're handing out thanks and kudos, we should also thank Dr. Jallo, because there was a point in time where somebody else came here and said, well, let's do some consolidation. And the board agreed. I was one of those people that agreed to that. But there's always time to be reflective, and we've had at least a year or so to, sort of a year to look at that reorganization. And it's okay for people to change their minds. I don't think it was an irrational recommendation at the beginning, but I'm glad we had the courage to relook at it. I'm glad Dr. Jallo came in and suggested maybe we might want to take a look at that again. I think this will provide us an opportunity to look specifically and keep an agenda. Our ayes focus on key performance indicators that relate to academic performance. So thank you, Dr. Jallo, for making the recommendation. So, let's go ahead and vote. All those, oh, yes.
I just want to thank the, thank my colleagues for having confidence in me to chair this committee. We had a really exciting planning committee, a planning meeting today. We want to take on a lot of things. We, we talked about a lot of things, so I'm excited about it. But I also want us to remember, as we grow out what it is we want to do, our role is going to be policy. How do we make sure that the policy is in place to do the work that we're supposed to do? So, that's going to resonate in every, every meeting. Whatever we want to do, we, we're going to look at what are the policies that are in place now, and what policies do we need to put in place as we move this work on? So, and I'll talk more about that when you turn the gavel over. But thank you, everyone, for your confidence in me leading this committee. Thank you.
All right, well, let's go ahead and make the committee official. All those in favor of resolution 276 indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
I don't oppose, imagine there's going to be any opposition, Vice President Elliott. So you are the chair of our newly reconstituted ESA committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you look at the agenda, it says, hold on, give me one second here. If you look at our agenda, it says that there's going to be a discussion on the board department budget. You know, that's, it's critical. And, and my, my proposal, let me emphasize again what I've said before. My proposal has been before you for some time now. But the superintendent hasn't defined exactly where her cuts are going to go. So we still have some more time, and I'm going to suggest that we put off the conversation today, because this is a conversation about my proposal, or anybody who has any ideas about how we should adjust our budget, is a conversation that should take place with every board member. We don't have every board member here, and I'm not even talking about the board member that has to replace Natalie Shepard. I'm talking about Commissioner Adams. He's not here today. So I, I'm going to suggest, since we're still working this out, the superintendent is still figuring out how she's going to respond to a whole slew of budgetary challenges, including the much-talked-about 20% reduction in the state, that this gives us some additional time to look at the proposal that I presented, tear it up, cross it off, make changes, do what you need to do. If you need an extra copy of it, Callia can provide it, or come up with your own proposal. But since Commissioner Adams is not available today, I'm going to suggest that we skip over this part of the agenda. We, I promise, we will make sure that this item on the agenda gets, we're given an opportunity to talk about it, because it is an important conversation about how the board can contribute to addressing this, the ongoing financial challenges of this district. So unless I hear anybody say, no, Ben, we got to talk about it tonight, I'm going to turn the gavel over to Vice President Elliott, the newly elected chair of ESA.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everybody, to the new ESA committee. I'm looking forward to the work that we're going to be doing in this committee. It's going to be a lot of work, but I think that it's going to be exciting work and work that we need to, to do. And, and so, one of the first things that we need to do is determine the purpose of the ESA committee. And so, Callia is going to put up a purpose that we, did we have this previously, Callia, or these are notes?
That is correct. That was-
We had this previously?
Purpose.
We're going to put this up, and I'm going to ask for comments, questions, your thoughts on what we have from, from before, from the, the previous ESA committee group. So, we have work to advance student achievement. Is that something that we want to continue? I would say yes, but what did my colleagues say?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't have a problem, if you all unmute, and we could just sort of talk about this, you know, just free, free-flow conversation. So work to advance student achievement, is that something that we're, we're interested in as, as a group, okay? So, review quarterly academic achievement reports. Dr. Smalls, can you talk a little bit about the kinds of academic achievement reports that we may be, that this may reference, if you will, please?
Sure, so it could be a couple of things. It certainly could be the reports that we send to the State Education Department, whether it's our schools who are in receivership, or our TSI, or CSI schools. It could be expectations that the chiefs have of the schools. So, all of our schools, including the schools who are in good standing. It certainly could also, it's going to apply to, and Dr. Morris, correct me if I'm wrong, some work that we'll be doing with the strategic plan. So we're going to have some updates as well there. Did I miss anything?
No, I was going to mention about the strategic plan, so that's-
Okay.
So can, so can we get a list of what reports we can expect?
Sure, we can work on that.
Yeah, a list of those reports, okay?
Callia, you'll just make a note of that, and we'll make sure we follow up.
And again, this is brainstorming. We will discuss this and then fine-tune it at the next meeting. So review of policies and/or administration recommendations that impact student achievement. Also, I would add here that we create policies, because there may be some policies that we have in place that we're going to have to create. So, is there any comments from my colleagues?
Vice President Elliott, I want to just go back to the academic achievement reports.
Okay.
Although I, just very briefly, although I would, would love to see some of those reports, I think we ought to have some, our ayes directly on some key performance indicators. I don't know how that would happen, or in what fashion, but those reports can tend to be sometimes voluminous, it can involve all kinds of data points. I would suggest that we get as focused on ELA and math scores as we have on graduating. I would suggest that we get as focused on ELA and math scores as we have on graduation rates. These are, these are, these are key performance indicators. And I would add one other. So I would say ELA, math scores, grad rates, that stuff has to be called out or during those meetings, we should be focused on that aspect of the reports. And then one other thing, and I don't know what the number is, I should, I'm drawing a blank. But when we talk about progress towards graduation, Leslie, you can help me out here. I know Sean talks about it a lot. There is a way to monitor that journey and the efficiency and effectiveness of which a student is. So at ninth grade or even in eighth grade, there's a number, you know what I'm talking about, Leslie? One, three, and what's that? I hear somebody talking, like one region's three credits at ninth grade.
Yeah, yeah. We can outline that for you to make sure that it's clear. And I would say, I was, I was waiting till the end. I agree with President White. We have, remember, the strategic plan has sixteen performance targets, target areas, three through eight math and ELA, graduation, schools in good standing, like all of those, there's so many academics. So those are the key. If we're going to make sure we have the alignment to the strategic plan, which I know is part of the agenda to talk about tonight, there are sixteen performance targets that would absolutely get at what President White is saying.
Yeah, I, just in reference to, Mr. President, what you were referring to adding these other areas, graduation rates, receivership. What I wanted to do initially was to get a list of what those reports were. And I don't believe that we can work on them all, so we're going to have to prioritize what it is that we're going to work on. In the pre-planning session today, we talked about, and I was going to wait and get down to the brainstorming session, but we did talk about there is a strategic plan, there is the monitors plan, there is the DEs report, and then there are board goals. So how do we synthesize all these things together? And what is it that we want to accomplish within this academic year? We may not be able to do it all, so we're going to have to prioritize. So once we get that list, you know, we'll come back at the next meeting and look at that list and determine what it is that this committee can accomplish within this academic year.
Makes sense.
All right. oversee program evaluation to ensure funded programs are effectively impacting student achievement and that successful programs are replicated where possible. Anybody have any comment on that one? Do you think we need to keep it or is that something that we're going to do as a result, as we review the academic achievement reports?
Vice President Elliott?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to add, for that one, I support keeping that one in there. But I would like for us to have a specific anti-racist scope to that. And so I'm, I'm learning how to actually write anti-racist policies, but I'm also using that right now through a different fellowship to understand also how we have contracts with vendors and how we look at it through that lens as well. And so because this may tie into either consultants or programs or agencies that we do services with and have contracts with, I just would like us to have an anti-racist lens on this one in particular as well.
So can you help us out and bring some language around how we do that?
Yes, and there is some tools that I'm learning through my fellowship. So absolutely, I will share that information with you so that you can review it and then see how we can potentially tie it in.
Okay, so anyone else have any comments on leaving this? Or maybe having a different point of view around the program evaluation fees?
I agree with leaving it in there as well.
Okay. Review and recommend position.
Vice President Elliott?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I was, I was trying to make sure I left space for folks to chime in. I, I think it should be left in there as well, especially because, as I indicated a few minutes ago, this district, long before Leslie got here, has a terrible history of not replicating best practice. We've had a very bad history of schools in isolation doing well and the leaders' practices not being replicated. So I don't know how you're going to do that, how you're going to oversee, whether we replicate, but how, what tool you would develop. Maybe obviously Leslie and her team could sit down and figure out how they might present that. But I think we need to keep an eye on those leaders and those practices that are doing well and to what extent we're replicating them. Because we do a lot of spinning of the wheels. One school is doing well and has a great attendance practice and the other school struggles and the two, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing. So I don't know how you're going to really monitor that, but I think that is key. We'll, we'll save ourselves a lot of time and money if we get better at that.
Yeah, I think it's in the policy development.
Okay.
So, and at future meetings, but I think that's where we're going to be able to make sure that that happens. Commit position to the board on resolutions pertaining to student achievement, correspondent policies and programs. So that's something that, you know, that's just a part of the work that we do in our committees that we have resolutions, just like we did earlier, come to us for approval. Any comments on that?
Vice President Elliott, I just want to comment to what President White just mentioned because I think on the other hand, this district also funds a lot of programs and initiatives that just don't work and we continue to fund them without even having evidence of the outcomes and sometimes knowing that the outcomes are not that great and we continue and extend them. So, you know, again, I'm very supportive of keeping, I'm going to say right now, I'm supportive of keeping all of these points and bullet points as a focus for ESA and however you structure it from meeting to meeting, because this meeting will meet every month. So I, I think we'll have enough time, if, because it is a monthly meeting, to fit these into the agenda, however you coordinate that. But I'm also very curious about programs that we have continued to historically fund that are not effective for our kids and why we continue that practice.
Yeah, what I'm thinking is, is that with the, with the, with the board goals, with the strategic plan, with the DEs report and with the academic plan, that that's going to help to frame the kinds of programs that we get. Before, I think we were just getting programs because the money was there to get it. And it may not be the best use of our, our resources around our time and our talent to have these programs just because the money is available. So I, I'm hoping that we're going to be far more thoughtful because we will have, you know, these, our goals and, and the district plan and we'll be more intelligent about the grants that we, and the programs that we take on, I believe, so. And then monitor.
I just wanted to add, oh, sorry.
Who was, I'm sorry, because I can only see. Who, who was it?
It was me and Amy.
Oh, okay, Dr. Jalloh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dr. Jalloh.
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you. It's two things also. You have to be very careful because very often at your meetings, you approve blocks of contracts with, with multi, multi-year agreements where you just, you know, you're just in a block, renew them for another year. And that's where you really run the risk of not knowing how well those different vendors in that block perform their duties on behalf of the district from year to year to year. Because it seems simple, you just renew. And in that renewal, you may be renewing people who have not really served the district very well. On the other hand, if you're renewing and not evaluating the effectiveness, that also wastes a considerable amount of money because you might be able to use that money for something else or you may need that money to support priorities that come out of your strategic plan. So I really think that that's kind of like low-hanging fruit in terms of a place where you can be a little bit more diligent about just renewing blocks of contracts without being 100% sure of their effectiveness.
Thank you. Commissioner Malloy?
I was just wondering, just pertaining to our, the board goals that we came up with. One of the board goals that we established at the governance committee was just equity in general and our desire to look more closely at that. I'm wondering if in the language in the document, which isn't up before me anymore, but I'm wondering if we can somehow relate that board goal of equity and kind of weave that into the language for the ESA committee. Specifically, you know, when we're talking about looking at programs that are working in, in some schools and we have to start really critically analyzing and looking at what we're spending at, at each school and just do a cost analysis and what is the benefit that we're getting? How successful are students there? Kind of comparing that data. So that equity lens is, is very important to me. So I would love to, to see that as part of this committee.
So, so how does that differ from what Commissioner LeBron was talking about with regard to anti-racism? You know, an anti-racist approach in our reviewing of our program evaluation pieces and what have you? How different is that?
Well, I think that it has a lot to do with equity. You know, some schools are further along in their anti-racism curriculum than, than other schools. So I think that equity plays a role, not just financially, but looking at those programs that we're offering some schools versus others.
Okay. Any other questions on the purpose of our, of the committee, Excellence Student Achievement Committee? Vice President. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. I felt the need to circle back to Dr. Jalloh's comments about our contracts and asked for clarification. We do have a consent agenda, so we do, is somebody else unmuted? Okay, we do have a, I'm getting feedback. Has somebody else got a live? Okay. We do have a consent agenda, so we do take many resolutions at the same time. But the only occasion where we have more than one contract or bid award in the same resolution is in the, in the area of purchasing where, you know, we've got any number of, of equipment, replacement parts, that sort of thing. And we, we purchase them in, in lots that are essentially the way the state requires us to bid them out. When it comes to student achievement contracts, that is to say consulting contracts or, you know, relationships with people who have direct contact with our students, I don't believe that we ever have more than one contract in any given resolution. So I'd like to have Dr. Jalloh clarify her comment or suggestion. Is it just a case of breaking down our consent agenda?
No, 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 no. I'm not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is when, I have, I have a few examples, but I don't want to say them publicly. But there are situations where you continue to renew contracts without stopping to evaluate the service that was provided two years ago, five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years.
With consulting, with our different consultants?
Consultants that you keep purchasing from and never go, and I don't, I'm not sure if, you know, but we found one, it was 20 years. And so I'm, I'm specifically talking about that. And just because you buy things by bulk, you know, do you need all those things, you know?
That's not the question. That's not the question.
So, so Mike, to answer your question, I'm talking about contracts of consultants and other contractors that you hire that come year by year by year, even in the contract request form. There's no evaluation. The evaluation section is left blank or it has general information about how you're going to evaluate this person or you just don't evaluate at all. So that's what I'm talking about. I feel that that's an opportunity that doesn't require a lot of work, any major changes, to be a little more diligent about doing so that you don't find yourself just automatically renewing contracts without having that evidence of impact.
Well, I agree, and there are some contracts that, I'll say it out loud, that we continue to renew because of their political, the political connections between those, in those organizations, rather than their, their impact on the students directly. But let's say we're talking about Center for Youth. Center for Youth is in so many different schools that, you know, they might be effective in one school and not, not nearly as effective in another. How would you propose we go about evaluating them in those circumstances?
So that, that's, that's so perfect. That's so perfect because had the opportunity to sit with them this week and the data dashboards and the amount of data they have about the work that they do with each school, with each student, with each class, with each grade is far better than, or equal to, or far better than anything we have for the people who do the same type of work as our employees or as your employees. So that's a perfect example of we telling them, listen, we're holding up your contract until we see evidence of impact. They were like, okay, came a week later with all the evidence and all their people there to defend it and support it with documentation. That's an example of something I'm suggesting be done with anybody who you're doing business, especially those who are giving direct service to students. They actually brought it. I was impressed. So that's an example of what I think we should stand. Everybody.
I would just remind us that it is in the policy development for us. That work that Dr. Jalloh is talking about, I believe, has to be done on the district level. But we have to make sure that the policies are in place so that they are, they are charged with doing that. And then they report to us what they have found. All right? Any other comments on the purpose? All right, so Cal, you've got those notes down and we'll talk later about that. Okay, we will go into Dr. Jalloh, the ESA and the academic plan. Dr. Jalloh?
You're muted.
I said, I think you have to share with me if you don't mind. It says here, host disabled or participating.
You know what? I don't know that we can do that right when we're live. Tom, would we be able to do that now? I don't know if he's on screen. If not, did you want us to go ahead and email it to me and I can share it?
Okay, sure. I'm sorry, everyone.
Well, can I just ask a question while this is going on? Just actually, this is for Dr. Myers. Usually as parents, get school calendars mailed to us every year and I wasn't sure if we were going to do calendars. I know like the schedule is kind of not set in stone as historically in previous years it has been. But just wondering if families were going to be mailed a school calendar this year?
So I see Mary Sol has come on the screen, so she's going to answer. But I, I know that, I think we landed on, did we, where do I, remind me where we landed, Mary Sol, I'm sorry.
Good evening, commissioners. How are you? I've missed talking to you on screen. Commissioner LeBron, we are currently reviewing the calendar printing. It is a high cost. And so one of the things that I'm doing is reviewing my department's budget and looking at what content is currently on the calendar and how it's going to change once we move into an in-person model. And since those changes may require a reprint, I would hate to utilize those funds and then have to spend more money on a calendar. So what we are going to do, and we're ready to go live with it, is we're going to upload the calendar onto our website and anyone who would like to print it can do so. So I'm very sorry, families.
Well, let me, let me just share this then. Would it be possible? Would it be possible to mail families the one sheet of important dates? Because I know a lot of families that don't have internet access or even smartphones, unfortunately. But at least give them the dates that we potentially have. And I know mailing calls too. But just something to say, we're not sending out calendars this year. But here are the important dates in terms of holidays and superintendent days and those types of.
So we're actually looking at preparing a magnet to be sent to families. And that is being priced out as we speak.
Thank you.
Day four of my new job.
Thanks, Mary Sol.
Calia, do you have it?
Calia, you're muted.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, everybody, can everybody see the screen? Can everybody see the screen?
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, okay. All right. So this is kind of a work plan for which I'm trying to organize the work as it relates to the academic plan. As you know, I'm really working on two plans at the same time. One is academic and one is financial. Under better circumstances, we would do the academic first and then the financial to support the academics. What you have before you is a document that is a crosswalk between three, I don't want to say competing plans, but three complementary plans, right? Starting off with the DE report with the recommendations that related to academics. And that's what you see on the far right. On the far right are the core components of the strategic plan, which you approved, I believe, last week. And in the middle are the components of the academic plan that is expected from me through you by November 1st. So once again, this is a crosswalk. This try, what I tried to do is pull out similar themes across the three documents so that we are always working across the three. It's, we try to marry the three so that using it less cumbersome. But I'm just going to concentrate on the middle column for now because that's the one that we're working on in addition to the strategic plan at the same time. So there's a section around teaching and learning. Come down, a section on special ed. And what one needs to understand is twofold. We're looking at over five years. In five years, what do we want to have accomplished as it relates to teaching and learning? In five years, what do we want to know and be able to say we have accomplished around special ed? But what the plan must also include are those impediments, those obstacles to us reaching those goals and what we have done about those things. Okay? The next section, if you come down, scroll down a little bit, Calia. At the special ed. Calia, are you with me? At the special ed, you'll see, or if you could, it's English Language Learners. That has its own distinct situation, section. It talks about the things that I could review as it relates to the education of those students. But once again, it's a question of understanding, what do we want in five years as a district as it relates to the education of those students? You come down a little further, the same thing about school climate and social emotional learning. You'll notice in the RCSD strategic plan, we refer that to ensure an inclusive, caring and safe learning environment. In the DE plan, it was not as prevalent an item. After that, we have family and community engagement. You see in the RCSD, it talks about building strong community. So that's the linkage there. In the last part, in the monitors plan, it talks about governance and, the last part, it talks about governance and leadership. And in this case, it's governance as it relates to board leadership and then leadership as it relates to school and district leadership and the development and the processes amongst those two groups in making sure that they are supporting academic achievement in schools and throughout the district. The next section is around human capital. That is a section where we're looking all overall at the personnel, the strategies and so forth that are used in the areas of retirement, recruitment, onboarding, supporting staff as they join and become one in part of the district. Organizational structure talks a little bit about the efficiencies of the structure of the district. And so we're looking at those things. Where do we want to be in five years? Will we still be a district of 61 schools? Will we still be organized in the structure that we are now? Or do we envision something different in five years? As you look to the right and you see what Dr. Aquino wrote, it's a little bit more general. This time, we're going to dig a little bit deeper into what do we want in five years? And what are some things we need to consider to get there in five years? Accountability. The section contains findings related to the consistent implementation of school and district level accountability systems. I interviewed with an individual today who said he had never been evaluated. Been here over 14 years. And I say never, was evaluated the first two years he was here. For the other 12, he was not. So things like that, that talks to accountability, not for just students, but accountability for the adults that work in the district. And then finally, operations. Any findings, recommendations related to the district's school operations? That would be facilities, transportation, IT, school food services, are areas that we could talk about in that particular case. So in general, those are the key areas for the monitors group, for the monitors academic plan. Try to relate it to the other plans that you use. But I needed a framework. So the framework that I'm using is from the Council of Greater City Schools. Two years ago, the Council of Greater City Schools produced a report called Managing for Results. And that report was dedicated to looking at the membership districts for Council of Greater City Schools to understand and measure finance, maintenance, operations. So I'm going to use that as a backdrop for the information that I ask and the, or the plan, excuse me, to see not only how we compare, but also to see what questions should we be asking ourselves about transportation, about substitutes, about how the district is run as it relates to academics. So we'll be using that. And of course, we'll be using the strategic plan from RCSD. My concern once again is that time is of essence. And under better conditions, we would do academics first and then finances to support those academics. But somehow we have to try and do both at the same time. So I'm hoping that Janelle and her team are ready to push this thing forward in with a certain kind of haste. So that's the overview for now. And if you have questions, I would really appreciate taking them.
Do we all have copies of that document, Dr. Jallow?
I don't know. I just sent it to, I will send a cleaner version to Calia and then I will make sure that you have that.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
I also failed to mention that we're also going to honor your three goals, especially as it relates to equity and academic and of course fiscal fidelity.
Any questions for Dr. Jallow?
Vice President Elliott?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah. When you flash the, when you put the PowerPoint up there, I saw three columns. The last one to the right, if I recall, was the, it was entitled the Distinguished Educators Report. Does that include the work that the board did? Or is that just Dr. Aquino's recommendations?
These are Dr. Aquino's recommendations because, like I said, this is a work document for me. But those recommendations are in there so that it's a reminder of they should somehow, where appropriate, be incorporated into the strategic plan and the monitors plan.
So where is the work that we spent, God knows how many hours, the commissioner telling us revise it? We revised it. And the last letter that she sent to us was, this is an excellent plan upon which Rochester's educational future can be built. That's not in there at all?
Hold on.
I'm just asking.
This is my work plan so that I can stay focused. It's not a plan for, this is no way a plan. This is just a work document so that I can keep track of three areas. Now, I would say that the action plans that you put together for the DE report should be part and parcel of the work that goes into the strategic plan. Because all of these plans have to coexist and be in alignment. So action steps, if the action steps are still appropriate, then I would think they would find their way into the strategic plan and then find their way into the monitors plan.
See, that's why I was asking. I was just trying to figure out where that whole document fits in.
I mean, that's just my opinion. That's what I would think. Because if it gets into the monitored plan where it's appropriate and it's not in the strategic plan, that doesn't work either. One without the other won't work. So it really needs to find a home where appropriate in each of the plans.
And the other reason why I ask is, you know, we've expended a considerable amount of effort in JIRA monitoring that. So we really should decide, and I realize this is your work plan. I get that.
No, no, this is just so I can keep on track.
No, 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 no. I get that. I realize this is the way you're keeping yourself on track. But we are, we're a board and including you. And I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. And I just want to, I want to know where, if at all, that voluminous document fits into this. Because if.
Yeah. I would give the administration a chance to also, you know, chime in.
So we have a meeting, I believe, Cal, is it next week? You're muted. To go over JIRA. That's on the books. Pardon me?
It's this week.
It's this week. Okay. All right. So we're going to go over that, President White, because I still don't have an understanding of it and things have just been so busy. But we finally got it on the books this week. And we're going to go through that with Dr. Jallow, with Calia, with Dr. Morris.
And with Amy.
Commissioner Malloy. Yep. So that's on the docket.
Okay. All right.
Okay. The plan that was written, is it five years?
No, but Dr. Aquino's isn't a five-year plan either. So I just was wondering.
Let me be clear. His is not a plan at all.
Right. No, it's absolutely right.
Now, we need to write a five-year plan. So we need to think, you know, what you might want today may not be what you want five years from now. So we need to think five years out. And I need to also have you kind of have a dual thought around, okay, I want this in five years. Where are we going to find the resources to pay for this over a five-year period of time, right? Because part of our goal on the financial, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Go ahead. I thought you were finished.
As I said, part of our goals around the financial plan so far is around, of course, reducing the budget and restoring your fund balance. Right? So these two plans are really so connected. So if you start to evaluate some of the programs that are not working and you have the, and you decide to cease from working in those plans, resources can be shifted from areas that are not working to support priorities that you want to have afforded over the five years. So that's why, that's another reason why evaluation of what's going on presently becomes so critical.
So I agree with you wholeheartedly. And I've said it repeatedly, Dr. Aquino did not write a plan. And in fact, he told us, you all need to write the plan.
Well, that wasn't his charge.
Okay, just let me finish. And so he did not write the plan. The board, at the direction and insistence of those from Albany, at the repeated directing assistance, numerous letters saying, okay, your plan's not right. You need to revise it. I just want to make sure that that plan was not done in vain. A lot of work driven by what the folks were telling us to do in Albany. And there was a lot of embarrassing press releases that came out of Albany saying, it's not right, it's not right, it's not right. And people throughout this district worked really hard to get a plan in place, which again, the last letter from the last commissioner said, this is a plan upon which Rochester's future education can be built upon. I just want to make sure that work was not done in vain and that it signs a place, either working in conjunction with Leslie's strategic plan. But that is critical. And if it's not, and I know you're not saying this, Dr. Jallow, if it's not that fits into the board's scheme of doing things, then we need to, we need to have that resolution and have that understanding. It was a lot of work. I think it's a pretty decent plan. And I just want to make sure it's not one of those things that people throughout the city and this county see reports done and then they sit on a shelf.
No, we won't let it sit on a shelf. That's why we were talking about combining not only our goals, but that plan, the monitors plan, as well as the strategic, the strategic plan that is going to be created by the district. We've got to figure out how we put all that together. You know, and you know, Dr. Jallow talks about five years. You know, we need to really, you know, look at, you know, what do we do for this year? And then what do we do for the next, you know, four years after this academic year? So, you know, this committee is, well, we'll work on that.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. So Cal, if you don't mind, we're getting down to the, was there anything else, Dr. Jallow?
No, if no one else has any questions. I mean, I'm still open to many suggestions when I meet with you guys. On one, if there are ideas or things that really are important to you to make sure that they are represented in the plan. I think that's important for you to reach out to me and let me or Leslie know so that that finds its place in the plan.
Okay.
Vice President Elliott? I think the key really is to make sure we're working in alignment, right? And then at that, and that systems are not bumping up once against, once another. We want to make sure that this work happens and it's not things that just sit in a binder, sit on a shelf. That's a tongue twister. Sit on a shelf. Really want to, yeah, that was a spoonerism. We want to make sure the work gets done. And so we want to, we want to be very strategic, but also very focused around this work to make sure that what the board and the district worked hard on as far as that submission with Dr. Jallow's expectations are, they have of her from the state, what we're endeavoring to do relative to the strategic plan, which captures all of that. All of that is aligned and we're not bumping heads. So it just, if you, if all of you would just be patient with us for just a little bit longer, we'll make sure that it aligns.
All right. Thank you. So Cal, if you wouldn't mind putting up the brainstorming that we did today of some of the suggestions that we had. This is, this is the, excuse me. This is the beginning, as Calia puts this. We came up with some brainstorming ideas around, you know, looking at the student assessments that we talked about earlier. ELA scores, math scores, English scores, reading scores, attendance and chronic absenteeism, SAT and ACT score, set plans. What's this district going to be doing in terms of getting students out of performance designations, for example, receiver shift? So if we could, if you all have any comments or want to add more to this list, this is just a brainstorming session. So I would recommend, you know, just everything out there because in next month's meeting, what we want to do is sort of fine tune and prioritize what is it that we can do for this academic year? What can we do for the next four academic years? If we're talking about a five-year plan. So any thoughts to the list that we have now, Commissioners? And should you add some, should we add some additional things? Do you have any issue with what we suggested here? So we talked about graduation rates. We talked about a couple. Go ahead, Dr. Jallow.
Something that measures college and career readiness.
Add measurement to that, Calia. College and career readiness measurement or metric.
Metric, yep.
CTE. The project, um, um, well, we talked about the African-American curriculum. I would also include project sixteen nineteen down there.
Vice President Elliott?
Yes, just yell out, because I can't see.
Okay.
Obviously.
Uh, just, just to, to what you just said a, a minute ago, given the, um, strength change and strategy on the issue of infusion of African, African-American studies, uh, I, I think it's important that that be listed so we can keep our eye on that particular prize. Uh, we talked about it earlier today in an officers' meeting, which my colleagues will be getting minutes from. But, um, you know, what are the, how do we evaluate, uh, the progress of the infusion of African-American curriculum in our district? And this isn't just talk, this isn't talking about racism, this is talking about the specific objective of trying to make sure that that curriculum, that, those, those issues, those traditions find their way into, that history finds its way into our curriculum. So, I, I'd like to, it's a lot that you got listed there, A to N, but, um, that's an important one that we should be monitoring, because as we talked today, that's the goal, that you, a year from now or maybe six months from now, whenever, we'll see that finally happen. So, we have to have a, a form in which to assess that. I think your committee is that.
Any other commissioners would like to chime in?
I, I just wanted to add, um, I had my hand raised, I'm sorry, I just don't...
He said, just jump in.
Yeah, just jump in.
Okay, okay. I, I don't want to interrupt anyone. Commissioner O'Brien, did you want to go first?
Yeah, I just want to ask, uh, two questions. One is, um, why science isn't on here as a measurement because the state does examine science?
Just added it, Commissioner.
Huh?
You just added it.
Okay, and then just to follow up on project sixteen nineteen, is that actual project in our district? I was not aware that we have that teaching in this district.
Yeah, we don't have it yet.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. But these are, this is just brainstorming right now. Um, so some of these things we may not be able to do this year. You know, we may want to, and I think what we should do is in our next meeting, um, look at, you know, take a look at this list and then prioritize it. What are the things that we can do for this year, given the DA, the, the DE's report, all these other, um, reports? Um, and, and determine what it is that we can do for this academic year. Um, Commissioner, uh, um, Dr. Jallow had talked about it, we talked about in our earlier meeting, about reading scores, you know, we want to make sure that every child in the district can read. And we know that the third grade reading scores determines, uh, um, you know, the increase in, in, uh, the prison population. So, is that a priority that we want to have? And does that align with this district plan and, and everything else? So, we're, we're gonna have to, I believe, just, really just have conversations around what it is that we want to accomplish for this year. ELA scores, math scores, what kind of policies do we want to put around that? You know, to make sure that, uh, we see, um, improvement around those scores as well. So, um, we, you know, this is a lot and it's a, it's a lot of work and we've got to think it out of, you know, what we want to accomplish again for this year and for succeeding years. Um, any, any thoughts on it? Yeah, Dr. Jallow?
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's just a pet peeve of mine. Um, third grade is too late to learn how to read. Uh, I would really like, high-performance districts measure their youngest, uh, students how to read, uh, how well they're reading and try to, uh, correct and support any challenges they may have kindergarten, first grade. So, you know, I think third grade is kind of late. By then, if you're not reading, it becomes even more difficult and now you have to add testing onto it. So, um, I, I, I agree with F, I would just like it to be far, far sooner.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Jallow, you took the word right out of my mouth.
Yeah.
Um, I was gonna say, I was gonna add early literacy efforts to that list. Um, and then what I wanted to say before as well, um, was that related to attendance and chronic absenteeism, I think there is definitely some overlap here with our efforts at, uh, maybe looking at our managed choice policy within the district. And I'd like to, you know, do some type of study, um, and take a look at, you know, academic outcomes uh, based on where students live, how close to their schools that they live, um, and get that data in there as well.
Vice President Elliott?
Yes, Mr. President, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Dr. Jallow on Amy's point, um, just reaffirming the literature. The research is very clear that you can almost predict with scientific certainty whether a child is gonna graduate by their proficiency at third grade reading scores. So, we do have to emphasize that. The other, uh, performance indicators that I think we should add to this, and you said, this is already a long list, but dropout rates, out-of-school suspensions, one could even argue in-school suspensions. You could put that up by attendance or make a separate category. But you, as you know, Vice President Elliott, when we've, uh, had our, uh, bi-weekly, um, uh, meetings at schools, uh, those are critical performance indicators that we measured, we've been measuring for years, uh, a, a, at our schools. You know, out-of-school, uh, suspensions, in-school suspensions, dropout rates. Um, they, there is a nexus obviously between those indicators and whether a child graduates on time as well.
Okay.
Can I also add one other thing?
Absolutely, Amy, Commissioner Malloy.
Right, I'm just, um, thinking about how many different programs we currently offer across our, our district. And so, for me at least, having a uniform curriculum or more uniformity in some of our earlier programs is, is very important. Um, you know, things that are assessment-aligned, that address the diverse needs of all of our students, that's, you know, guided by needed interventions, so that's definitely a uniformity.
In curriculum?
Yes, please, and, you know, then also, and I don't know if that really relates to this committee necessarily, but having more community opportunities to maybe examine the, the evidence-based teaching and learning that, that's taking place in our district so that the community is more involved. Um, and I'd also like to see some type of measure that our instructional leaders or admins are consistent in setting high expectations and accountability district-wide.
So, I just want to remind us that, you know, this is around policy, you know, how do we create the policy around these things? So, um, just keep that in mind that we're talking about policy development. Um, and as one of the, um, uh, charges for, uh, the committee, and certainly, we will review, you know, the academic plans and, and what have you. But, you know, how do we, how do we tighten this up by making sure that we've got the right policies in place?
There, there's another section, um, special ed.
Oh, yes.
How do we want to measure, how do we want to measure success, um, of our special ed department and, and the education that those young, uh, people are getting in our district? So, I don't know how you, um, that, that might take its own section, but I think that's, um, that shouldn't be forgotten.
Okay. So, the, 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 um, what I'd like to do for, for next month is for us to, to look at, you know, how do we prioritize this work? And what are we going to accomplish for this particular year? Um, we're meeting on a monthly basis, so I'm, I'm assuming that there, there's gonna have to be a lot of work that's done, you know, outside of the, uh, these meetings. But, um, you know, how do we, what is it that we want to work on, uh, for this year that we can say at the end of the year that this committee has accomplished thus and so? You know, what are, what are our outcomes going to be at the end of this, um, at, at the end of this academic, um, this year? The other piece that we have to look at, um, is, if I get down to the action items for upcoming meetings, is we need to look at what policies that we have around academics that are currently on the books.
Mm-hmm.
So, we, we need to read, we need to look at those policies. What do we have, um, that we don't have to, you know, reinvent the wheel? And then, uh, we talked about in the earlier meeting about, um, you know, sharing the spotlight uh, on some schools, uh, as a part of the, um, uh, ESA agenda. Any thoughts on those, those two things that I just talked about?
Vice President Elliott, can I add, uh, one more to the list? It might have been mentioned, but I'm not sure, ELLs, ELLs bilingual students.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that, that clearly is something we should be, at some point, considering monitoring, probably even a high priority. But I just want to make sure that was on the list.
And again, just as a reminder, that is, that is a metric that's one of the sixteen. So, when you, when we get that finalized, you'll see, again, the alignment, I think, will be very cohesive.
Wh- when do you think you're gonna have that available, Dr. Myers?
We're gonna bring that forward, um, to the, um, the regular business meeting in September, because we got, we need to get moving. So, Dr. Morris is working on that and we want to make sure we get that to you in ample time. I know, um, that, um, you gave us some feed, but you all, each commissioner gave us feedback at the last board meeting in August. So, we'll work to incorporate, um, what we can into that and then move that forward along with my goals, because we've got to finalize that as well. All of the, all of this aligns.
Right, okay, all right. Anything else? I, I think the, the last piece is, uh, the administrative liaison to the committee. Is that gonna, who is that going to be? Is that gonna be Dr., um, not Dr., yeah, Dr. Morris or Dr.?
I was thinking Mike Schmidt.
I think we talked about maybe even having it share, who, who'd you say, Leslie?
Mike Schmidt. It's gonna be Dr. Morris.
All right, is Mike here?
No, he's actually checking central office for us.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
But we also talked about the fact that we may need at some point to have, uh, Dr. Martinez.
Yes.
Also to be a part of this at some point as well, so, because some, some of the administrative work, um, we may need to, um, not the administrative work, some of the metric, metrics. And that work we may need from, from her, so...
Absolutely.
Yeah, how you doing, Dr. Martinez? And Callie, just one other thing, uh, a parent representative for ESA?
Yes, so, um, we had not, uh, uh, originally advertised, as you know, for a parent rep for this particular, um, committee because it wasn't in place at the time at which we went out for, um, for collecting those applications. But now that we are a functioning committee, um, we can go ahead and update that. So, um, our staff will be working to update the website. Um, and this is a not-so-silent plug for any parents that would be, are watching with us. Um, if you would like to apply to become a parent representative to the Excellence and Student Achievement, um, committee, please visit our website, um, rcsdk12.org. And there is a section on becoming a parent representative to a board committee. Um, there will be, um, there is an application, uh, process already on there. You might not see ESA listed, but you can apply by using that application form and submitted it, submitting it to board dot, uh, dot rcsdk12.org or simply filling out the application, um, there is a Google Doc, um, uh, format there as well for you to submit. But we haven't, of course, received any applications thus far for ESA, so we're gonna have to start that process from scratch. So, please, um, bear with us as we, we might be without someone for, for a little while until we get that, um, rolling.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's it for the, um, ESA committee. I will turn it back over to, uh, President White.
Okay, all right, uh, we have one matter, as I understand it, that we have to discuss in executive session that relates to a particular employee, uh, the terms and conditions of employment. So, uh, I'm going to need a motion from one of my colleagues to go into, uh, I think it was Vice President Elliott made the motions in a second by Commissioner LeBron. All those in favor of going into executive session for the purpose of discussing a particular employee or terms and conditions of their employment indicate by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? There's no opposition. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you watching this board meeting, it's very likely that we won't come back out of executive session to vote. But if you'd like, you can wait however long it might be and, uh, we may come back to adjourn publicly. Uh, if not, uh, on behalf of the Board of Education, thanks for, uh, watching tonight and be safe. And then we'll make a motion to adjourn.
Perfect, I'm done.
Okay. So Willa, I assume that's your motion to adjourn?
Yeah, sure.
All right, is there a second? Vice President Elliott, I think I heard first say second. All those in favor say aye. And, uh, by the way, Ricardo, for your watching, we love you and get well. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.